Good evening, I'd like to call this Columbia Board of Selectment regular meeting for September 20th, year 2022. And the first thing is, this is a hybrid public meeting, thank you all for getting on the chat, and for all of you for showing up. Public, when attending, if you have something you want to say during anything that's not, or anything that's sounding generally very, audience citizen, please state your name and your address and we'll listen to you. If anybody gets out of line or disrespectful, you will be asked to leave, and we will, on Zoom, we will shut you off, so, there you go. The first thing I'd like to do is, please join me in the President's Plaid, what will be... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand. I move to approve, I made a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Yes.
Bill O'Brien, who is on Zoom, raises his hand and aye. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, I move to approve the Board of Selectmen, I make a motion to approve the Board's regular meeting minutes for September 6th, 2022. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill. Audience, the citizens, seeing none? Yes, sir.
Bernie Melloar, 100th writ. I'm a pickleball junkie. Have a bunch here, so...
Hello, Bill.
I'd like to make three quick recommendations. First one, and this is a gathering of, I don't know what, sending some people we've talked to. If they're gonna put in new pickleball courts, they be dedicated to pickleball as a dual purpose. Dual purpose means tennis and pickleball in one court. That's very problematic, especially if you get a tennis player coming in and quartered both pickleheads, or pickleheads playing solo ball. This happened in Mansfield, where they have a tennis court and four pickleball courts, nets perpendicular to the tennis net. One tennis player was playing, about eight or 10 pickleheads came up, and what do you do? You say you gotta leave, oh, you can't do that, but fortunately, this person's involved, I'm almost done, but you guys can have it. I'd like to avoid that kind of situation. The second thing I don't like about a dual purpose court is the lines are confusing, very difficult to read. But if you got a dedicated court, only pickleball lines, works fine. The other thing I'd like to mention, if you're gonna make new pickleball courts, they need to be dimensioned to the dimensions of the USA Pickleball, Pickleball Association. What are those dimensions? A couple of feet larger than what we have now, it's not a big deal. But it makes a difference when you're going after the ball, like I saw you doing at the court, and you gotta stop quickly by leaning up against the fence, that's not good, so that's the second thing I'd like to... Third thing is walkways, the course stone, what stonedust is called, is tracked into the courts. I'd like to recommend that, we go with some other surface material. Now, what I have, and I'm done, what I have in this packet is some pictures of the dual purpose courts, and you look at the lines, you can see the confusion. I also have a picture of a professional court that shows the proper lining, and I've got the dimensions from the Pickleball Association. So, that's all I want to present, anybody else want to...
Actually, it's, uh, thank you very much for your comments, now it's back to me, and then I'll call on... Okay, gotcha, if I let it get out of hand, then I look back, so, thank you, thank you for your comments, yes?
Okay, my name's Lori Galen, I live in 16 Lathan Hill Road, and I am here with my fellow pickleball players to say that we're really excited that Columbia plans to ban access to pickleball. We did do a petition to show the level of support, and we got 78 signatures, and I gave the original bet to Mr. Walker yesterday.
I'm checking the addresses on...
Yes, I figured, people that are of a weak nature, no outsiders, so I just would like to just read the paragraph that people attest to. "We, the undersigned residents of Columbia, Connecticut, respectfully acknowledge that our request to add at least one other dedicated pickleball court to recreation park. We have as many as 13 people in some sense gotten even bigger, that gather in recreation parks to play pickleball on weekday mornings. The activity is multi-generational and is beneficial to the visitor population of Columbia in terms of physical health, fitness, mental health, and increased social..."
Well, normally I know go back and forth during audience decisions, but let me kind of address a couple of things here. There is pickleball in the upcoming, this year, we understand that, and yes, when I played up at the park, I thought that the fences were awful tight. Okay, so, thank you very much for your comments, we need to put that, adjust the fences a little bit. I'm not sure we're gonna dig up the fences on the first one and move it, but we'll be right by the second, so... I understand what you say about the dual courts, but if we have another dedicated pickleball, and we still put other ones dual courts, those dual courts are better than nothing, if nobody's playing tennis, okay? So, I understand your comments there, and I also understand about the stonedust, bringing it on, to, I mean, I hit the ball bad enough, I don't need to get bouncing away off a rock to make it even worse, so, I get it, so, maybe nobody... Anybody else? Yes?
Mr. Stansky, I'd just like to comment about the stonedust. It's not only causing, you know, issues with slippage and things like that, you couldn't slip on it, but it's actually starting to damage the existing courts, if you take a look at it, you'll get that. And if you're thinking of doing a dual court in addition to a dedicated, I know you're planning on redoing the existing tennis court. There is a way where you can get two more pickleball courts on that tennis court, if you expand it by about 10 feet in each direction. And there will be no lines that are confusing, because it'll sit outside of the existing tennis court, in the space, you know, that it has, or, I don't know what's called a tennis court, I can show you how to do that.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a few remarks. I'm bringing your name and address, Stan Rosenstein, 21 Redding Trail.
Yep.
I've been in town for years. Socializing is a great aspect of the game. We play from early spring, because it gets too cold in the winter, and there could be about eight, nine, or 13 players who show up almost every time, but not every single day. It's a great way to make friends with other Columbia residents, and we welcome new players, we try and teach them the game. It's multi-generational, a lot of regular players sometimes bring their sons, and their daughters, and sons and daughters that I played with them. So, it's a great way for families to play a sport and to have fun together. There's health benefits to pickleball, it's a wonderful way for seniors and others to get exercise and to stay in shape. You're always moving around the court during the games. You get addicted, you really want to keep playing the game, so you can be a better player. So, any funds that the town will spend, I think, will be due, well, very, very well.
My only concern is, if everybody gets addicted to something, I'm gonna need more social games. So, I appreciate your comments, I really do, I, listen, they're, they're, they're all wonderful comments. It's in the plans for this year, and we'll look at making some adjustments, so, thank you. Yes, sir.
Jerry Murphy, Tree Brighton Lane, I just wanted to throw a curveball, as I mentioned to these people walking in earlier. Another possibility is the basketball court, you have to put lines on that court, go cross-court perhaps, and people, if we have a portable that we can bring with us, put it there, but it's another way of marking off a court, maybe two courts. Field that's really, field of play that will be rectangular, with really, thing that comes into play is where the, where the foul shooting thing takes place, thank you.
Anybody in chat want to say something? Nobody raising their hand? Yes, young lady in front.
Um...
Say your name.
Yeah, Jonathan, one of three.
Hold your hands.
I, I would just like to suggest that rather than slipping out of stones, or going to the expense of paving the stonedust trail, now, the town needs some rumors. A quote, when tennis players play, for instance, a stonedust core or some surface, they always improve the court before they play, and, and I would think that might need at least an inexpensive temper solution to the safety issue of slippage. And I would, secondly, I would also encourage the town not to eliminate tennis. I know, I know that you're way more pickleball players and tennis players, but tennis is a recognized game, it's a game that should be taught to youth, and there are a lot of tennis players around too, and so, I hate to see tennis court completely go away. And I would encourage you to build a new tennis court somewhere in Seattle, because the current tennis court for the last 50 years has had the Grand Canyon down in 11, and it's really a very poor tennis court. So, I would encourage you to build a tennis court somewhere in Seattle. Thank you.
Yes.
John O'Neil, 23th Park, Mill Road, so, yeah, I'd like to point out that there are several other parcels that have been given to the town in some cities. One in Ironwood is five acres, and one in July Drive, both areas are dense populations, and they've never been used, because the town has the direct park visit, they want a central playing area, everything must be there, but as you just know by now, the wetland issue is there, the soil level, underwater level, really restricts what you can do, you only have a small area that's sort of high and dry and not very. So, I recommend that you start looking at these other places, other towns have little best pocket parks for, you know, tennis and things like that. You can do that, you can get so proud that you're having competing people about, you know, tennis, or whatever.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, we'll take all these suggestions, and we will certainly consider them, thank you very much. Any other issues with the audience citizen, anybody want to speak? Great, thank you, we have a long meeting, we're gonna stick around, I only talk 10:10, 10:30. Okay, I, uh, back to the whole business now, let's see.
So, also, there's something to...
Just talk about it.
Oh. They're gonna come with this, they're gonna come last, when, I don't know, well, actually, it's gonna be... Okay, this says, that's what I'm... Okay, so first, we have Fire Chief Steve Stansky, who's gonna discuss what's on the agenda, please, okay? So, the 75th anniversary in Burn, in Burn.
As everyone knows, that 75th are celebrated, and that's about to dawn October 3rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. I think we talked with Truver DeCarly, he has secured himself, and one other Truver, that will be at the event for the duration, that was asked and requested. And everything else has been approved, the permit for the tents and the liquor temporary permit for the day for the beer and wine garden has all been approved, gone through the proper channels of that, so, holding on for a beautiful day.
That's cool. Let's hope it doesn't make...
Very good.
I didn't know if you wanted, they put that for new business, and, all their older, you know, what, for the burn.
You can, just, you can talk about that.
So, though, it's more recommendations, when we burn, or when the Fire Marshal's office burns that parcel, there was a significant influx in call, there are, there's a station about it, I think, maybe putting out some type of publication about it, and then also to say why we do it, there's a lot of news involved, people complaining about the smoke and stuff like that, I don't think townspeople understand why we do it, and the cost saving it has for the town and the back there, but I think maybe some type of notification on that. With that being said, my boss, Mike Lester, has watched over that event every time it's occurred, he has taken off of work, and this is not special to him, but whoever might have to be delegated to, to watch this, I think some type of compensation for the, the day is not out of the realm, that the town could consider taking all the time from work and stuff. I think it's a little bit outside the scope of the Fire Marshal's office, again, we give the permits, improve the permits, this one was through the EEP also, that we have to get permission from, so... And I think the savings to the town would easily justify it, and the amount that it, that it costs for the holidays. It's fortunate that Mike is part of the fire department also, so, we have no problem using an apparatus to go stand by there and stuff, but looking down the road, it might not be the same scenario, or players involved, this is beginning to, again, information.
Okay.
May I ask you something? Can we write something up, putting Columbia's, that wasn't right? Maybe you and Mike can write something up on what this does, or somebody, and put in the details of that, because that would just come across them.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak for, I know it, I think the rain was about 10,000 in January, the first time, and I think over 12,000, so...
I'd rather you wrote something up about why we're doing it.
Yeah, you can put it on the...
You know, yeah, and talk about how we will notify people that we're doing it the next time, so let's clear that up through the town, when we put it out, I've never, I'm not doing that, but on the town website, and also, we could put it on the board, so people know what we're doing, so, okay. All right, anything else there?
Grant's off.
Yeah, it's gonna go under Town Administrator, important, it wasn't on the agenda. Okay, so, 6.2 and 6.3, we're not moving anything, but I, these were put in, I think, in the opposite order of what they should have been. You want to talk to it, and then I'll make the motion.
Right, so, working with Joan in, and with the State Historic Preservation Office, and with our town attorney, we, we have the start of a conservation evening for that Hop River property. We're not completely done yet, but there's a draft of where it is today. If the Board of Select could look at this and then give A and P back to me, there's a few things that I'm still not, that I'd like to change, but we don't need to do it right now, I mean, there's still time, plenty of time to get that done, but what does need to be done is 6.3, which is to actually apply, have a motion to apply to the State Historical Preservation Office, and 6.2, to establish, to agree to establish a Hop River Preserve Committee, which is also required to be part of this historical preserve.
I have a question. I, I, I'll make the motion, but before we do that, I need to be a little more comfortable. You're gonna ask if we apply to the State Historical Preservation Office for the designation of a state archaeological preserve at the Hop River, okay? You're telling me that does or does not lock us into whatever the state wants to do?
Joe can handle, but according to the town attorney, you're locked unless through a town meeting, a modification is made to the conservation easement, so...
Right, so, there is no contract with the state, there's no contract with the ship, oh, they don't tell us what we can or can't do. They review the historical aspects of the property, and decide whether it's worthy of this designation. Then the town places that on the deed, they write the easement, the terms are exactly what the town wants to have in it. The main thing is that there shouldn't be any digging, where we can be disturbing the soil, without an archaeologist saying, there's a plan, it's professional, and they approve it, okay? It doesn't limit anything else the town wants to do, once they're not gonna, you know, when they're in the backhoe, they got the holes and something. So, the easement has in it the things the town already knows it wants to do, the parking lot, the roads, the fields. If you have other plans, no one's mentioned them, so I don't see how it's really gonna restrict the town in any way, but anyways, anyways, it's you folks that are gonna approve this easement, and you're gonna write it, you know, it's being done by, even right now, the water and marquee and stuff, but you can all weigh in, and I thought you'd have a copy of it for yourself before this meeting, but, you know, yeah, it doesn't have to get done until after the state agrees, the site can be a archaeological preserve, they may turn it down, it's unlikely though, from what I've been told. So, that will take, you know, several months at least, in the meantime, it will allow Stephen, the committee, who's gonna do all the work of the application, and sort of go to the meetings and carry it through for us, with a professional, what can I say, a consultant for nothing, and, you know, it saves up to a lot of effort. So, he can go ahead, he needs, he needs the committee, he needs someone to be his, I don't know what it's called now, but
Liaison.
The community liaison, or something like that, he has to have someone in this community who's ready to work with him. Right, he's gonna, so, he does, so, if there's no committee, he can't do that, unless somebody personally here wants the volunteer to be, that moves on person, you know, could be Mark, could be Sue, or whatever, but, you know, you have a basic volunteer committee, it's the same kind of thing. They're basically gonna make a management plan and help carry it out, and the town will approve all that before it happens. Does any budgetary issue, the town again will approve it all, no one just, you know, contract to spend money or something, it's coming from the town. So, I, I don't see the issue of, worry if the state is going to tell you what you can do with property, it's no, it's no conveying any rights to the state at all, in the deed. It's only conveying rights the town needs to give up and on, you know, it's like a conservation easement. Now, when you say people came over there, and, I don't know, it was fun, or running TVs over ruins and things like that, or wild woods, it's the same thing.
Okay.
I'm gonna, sorry.
Um... Yes?
I, I should like to add that, I, I have this feeling that you, that the board has a misconception about a property being designated as a state historic preserve. The state will have no control over, no ownership, nothing, it belongs to the town, the town approves management for it. The state in designating this town-ruined property as a state historic preserve, just allows it recognition, access to grant money for development, and a little publicity, so that you can go to the website and find a list of hundreds of sites, if you're interested in visiting, that's, that's all it is.
Thank you, some of us aren't as trusting of the state, because we've been around. That's all, that's all, I'd like to put in there, you know, lock solid that they can't tell us what to do, but, I'll just... I, I, I actually, I'm sorry, started a discussion, I asked you, because you're down there all the time, you're the subject matter expert down there, I'm not gonna open this up to the whole floor, I'm sorry. The bottom line is, unless you're directly involved in this, and... Thank you, Joan. Okay, I move to approve the town administrator, Mark Waltz, to apply for a state historical preservation, to the State Historical Preservation Office for the designation of a state archaeological preserve at the Hop River Mill Open Space Site. I would like to put under the direction of Columbia Hop River, for Joan to involve. Okay, any discussion? Do they have this in front of them, for motion? No?
Yeah.
I'm gonna read it again, I move to approve that the town administrator, Mark Waltz, be allowed to apply to the State Historical Preservation Office for the designation of a state archaeological preserve at the Hop River Mill Open Space Site. So, we're, we're asking to be, and to get a designation of a state archaeological preserve down at the Hop River Mill Open Space Site, it's not a state park, it's not, it's, it's just the preserve now, okay? Discussion.
I think it's a great idea, I've been there many times, and I, you know, I think we're gonna draw people from across the state to see the mills that were there, or see the...
There's no mills shown.
No, the remain, well, there's remains of the mills that were there, in the 17, I just think it's a great idea, as a...
Go back and forth, because like you said, I mean, who knows what they do in 50 years, well, that's a site, and we're gonna take over all these sites, you know? In perpetuity is only until, I actually looked up what in perpetuity means, it's only, no, it's not really perpetual.
Please don't push us, just...
Regardless, you know, the state is the state, I went down there, I can see it being a great thing, I don't know of inviting people from all over the state here, it's kind of how we got these weeds in my pot, just saying, but it's, it is definitely worth preserving, it's, there is a lot, I mean, that's something.
It's fascinating there.
Are you off mute for a reason? Bill, are you off mute for a reason? I think that's an eight out of ten. Bill, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, you're on, I see you're off mute, I don't know if you had input.
No, it's one of the votes when the time comes.
Okay, so, all right. So there's a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Did he, did you wanna say?
I had nothing to add to the conversation.
Yeah, I I looked over at you, he's saying, well, good to go, so, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Now I make a motion to approve the establishment of a Hop River Preserve Committee. Any more discussion? Cause they're gonna watch over everything. That happens, yes, sir.
Can I volunteer to be part of that, or is that already established?
You're not only part of it, you're you're the chair. Uh, no, but thank you. All those in favor of the motion to approve the establishment of the Hop River. Preserve Committee, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And if you get names to me, we can populate the committee in the next four seconds.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, how many interest left? Listen, I I'm all for it. I'm I'm all for it, okay? You know, I put my name on some open space places, much of the. Chibrin of some and whatever. I'm all for it, okay? Leave a beautiful world for the people behind us. I don't care if you believe in the science or you don't. It's just right, leave it better than how we got it, okay? So, but the bottom line is. State is a state. Titan Energy. See, we have Chris Ram, I need to have some questions, do I discuss this?
Yes, um. There is money available. I've been working with our energy consultants, which is Titan Energy, Chris Ram, his son Kyle. And there's pockets of money which. Chris and his team are going to help, they're creating an application for ER. EV charging stations in town. Uh, Bob the Lard, uh Miller, has gone around town with Jason, Mike Sylvester. Um, and looked at all of our fuse boxes and they mapped out. Um, possible possible location for two chargers in town hall. Uh, charger at the town library, a charger in the Murphy House, at the senior center, one in Public Works. Uh, for a bus to be charged in one at Porter School. Now, these will just be applications out to the state. Uh, there is deep money available too, and um environmental money from the suit. Uh Volkswagen for violating the clean era, and that's that's actually deep. So I could, if you'd like, Chris, to expound a little more on what they're trying to accomplish, I asked you.
Chris, how are you?
Good, 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 Stephen, thank you very much. And Mark, you did a pretty good job, just reintroduced myself, my name's Chris Ram. Um, I'm the 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 vice president general manager of Titan Energy, New England, we're based in Hartford. Uh, we have a large client base, we currently serve about just under half of the hundred and sixty-nine towns in the state of Connecticut. And have clients from here to California, Maine to Florida, so we're have a very good footprint, but we're very well established in Connecticut. Uh, a number of different energy fronts, including the solar project on the Porter School. Um, the the energy contract that's currently in place, which is about half of what the current um. What the current ever source rate is. It'll be about third with the ever source rates gonna be in January, so we we appreciate the business we've done in Columbia. We've been asked to come in and take a look at EV charging systems. Then Mark, just to expand a little bit on what the. But the funding availability is, and this funding is available through the two utilities in the state, EverSource and United Illuminating UI. And effectively, um, that money that is available uh is twenty thousand dollars per site. Um, at in at at each customer. Um, to pay for things like what's called the make ready costs and make ready costs. Are the electricians involved, any any upgrades that need to be done to the electrical panels, the trenching, the conduit and so forth. Um, effectively, that pays for a hundred percent of the make ready costs um for most applications. Secondly, the uh the other part of the incentive is pay for half of the charging unit itself. Um, and there's a variety of different manufacturers that we work with. Um, that have different software packages and the like. Uh, but again, pays for about half the unit itself. So the significant part of the the total cost of of the installing of uh EV chargers covered by the 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 current incentives. Um, two things that we've offered to the town, one is, and and this is consistent with what we've done with many other towns and. Uh, many large private clients that we have as well across the state. Um, there is, uh, based on the VW settlement money, there's one point eight million dollars that's been awarded to the state to help with EV charger implementation. And so um. Uh, the the first step in the whole thing, I should just take take a step back. There's a site visit that happens with. Uh, one of our electricians as well as our, one of our project managers from Titan, who handle specifically EV chargers. Um, they do the site visit, walk with, in this case, Jason. Um, and um scope out where the potential places are for the EV chargers that Mark just summarized where they are. We go back, um, we 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 do the quotation portion with electricians and so forth. Uh, we offer a proposal to the town um that incorporates the incentives and and everything else. Uh, once a customer signs off on the proposal, that gives us the green light to fill out a second application, and that's the one directly to the utility itself. Um, and um, the customer also signs that one. And I should note that neither the proposal that Titan puts together for the client, nor the uh the application that goes to EverSource or UI. binds the customer in any way to a project. That's a kind of an important thing to note. Um, once we put. Once, once we put the application into um the utility, uh what that does, it earmarks the dollars for that project. And um, and those funds stay earmarked until the customer either decides they wanna move forward on the project. Or they decide they wanna withdraw from the project. From the time that the application is approved by EverSource and the funds are earmarked, um, the client has twelve months to finish the project. And so that would bring us some, obviously, into almost October of twenty twenty-three. Um, where the project would have to be completed, so. Gives you plenty of time to mull it over a little bit, but meanwhile, the funds are are protected. The remaining portion, which is um roughly, roughly three thousand dollars or so per charger, after all the incentive and all the. The make ready work is done, there's about, still about three thousand dollars remaining. Uh, what we've um, you know, be included in our proposal, uh which will deliver probably next week. We'll first go after the VW settlement money, and there's yet another application to apply for that, which we will handle. Um, um, supporting the town. Um, and uh, uh, if we, if the 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 town of Columbia is selected for some of that VW settlement money, that will cover the remainder. Of the um, you know, the 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 fifty percent of the charging unit itself, that's not covered by the first incentive from the utility, so the the total project would be funded. And uh, we should know that by the end of the year, who's gonna get the VW settlement money? If in fact that the town is is not awarded the settlement money. The VW settlement money, Titan has committed to, uh, if the town wanted to, to um, to um. You know, um, fund the 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 on a two to three year basis. Uh, we would, we would um, late at night, I'm forgetting the word, but we would, we would effectively loan the money to the town, we would, we would.
Finance.
Finance, thank you very much. I appreciate the help on that. We would finance the remaining. We 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 would finance the remaining portion as zero percent. And so effectively, you can put one charger in, that was three thousand dollars that the town still owed. We would take that three thousand dollars and divide it by twenty-four, and that would be the monthly payment the town could make. Again, we're what we're trying to do is present three different options. One is using VW money if we're awarded it. Number two is the financing options from Titan. Lastly, if the town just said, no, we're just gonna pay for them, that's fine. The other thing that everybody should just know is that Mark uh mentioned uh the town hall, the town library, the Murphy House, the the senior center. Public Works Garage and the and Porter School, each of those, the way the incentives are set up. Are separate sites, so each one of those sites, we get twenty thousand dollars allocated to it for for the incentives. Um, so it's not twenty thousand dollars per town, it's twenty thousand dollars per site. And um, so the the incentives are quite lucrative. Show you how crazy they are, Laz Parking is one of our clients across the state and nationally, and um. You know, they have some garages that are, you know, ten stories high, well, each floor of a garage is is deemed a different site and and allocated funds. Um, so again, twenty thousand dollars per site, if if Columbia was an underserved community, which it's not. Um, it would be forty thousand dollars a site, for example, Willamette, Hartford, Bridgeport. A lot area, Waterbury, that we're doing a lot of work in, um, each one of those sites is actually the incentive of forty thousand dollars per site. Um, in an underserved community. So anyway, just in summary, I mean, Mark, you you did a good job summarizing it. Um, but the next step, uh, we've done all the site walks, next step is we would present you with a proposal with everything I just discussed. Um, if the town were assigned on the proposal, no obligation, we would then fill out the applications for EverSource. Uh, and earmark the funds so they don't go away between now and the time that you make the the actual decision. I hope that's, I hope that's useful.
Uh, thank you, Chris, that was actually excellent. Here's my question. I plug my in my car, who pays for that electricity?
Well, for example, take the 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 situation of the town hall, I mean, the the electricity that's being used. Is paid for on the meter that's that's that the town hall is using, however. Um, the chargers with the software, um, if somebody were to drive up going down Route eighty-seven, they see on their. Their their the app on their phone that there's a charger located at the town hall in Columbia, they could pull in and charge, and they're gonna, they're gonna pay a fee to do that. So it turns into a revenue producing opportunity for the town as well. If there were certain. People you wanted to earmark, that you did not want to charge for the use of those chargers, the software can handle that. Yeah, I know, Steve, you wanna charge everybody, no, no problem, that's up to you guys.
I'm charging twice, listen, we're gonna play pickleball for us.
Well, yeah, so so, you know, again, you know, the the they they um, each customer can determine who they want. To charge and who they don't wanna charge, and the customer also determines the rate they wanna charge on a on a per kilowatt charge basis, so that it's not regulated. It's not forced by the town, I'm not by the state or the or the it's uh the the utilities who are giving you the incentive dollars. You you have the the wherewithal, and we can help guide that process as to what would be a good ballpark number to be charging. And again, it's it's all off, it's all off everybody's phone, they go up and they charge credit card. The the software collects the funds and then deposits automatically into the town's bank account. Very high tech. We just, we just finished, if anybody's interested, we just finished um installing two down the new um. Community center in Willamette in that parking lot, and and uh, so if you take a ride by on, I think it's Valley Street, you'll see them in that parking lot, and uh. We we literally been doing about forty site visits a week uh across the state now for about about four or five months, so we've. Um, not to brag about Titan, but we're the, we're the number one. Uh, recipient of the EverSource and UI incentive dollars in in the state, we've taken most of them, quite frankly. So we have a lot of clients and doing a really great job.
Uh, I'm gonna open it to the board for questions, Lisa.
How long does it take to charge a car?
Yeah, the the ones that we're quoting is 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 a good co- a good question, Lisa. The um, there there are level ones, twos and three chargers. Um, level ones are something that you'd probably have in a residential house, which we don't participate. Yet, in that market, we're strictly um towns municipalities and private entities, but um. So uh, uh, and then there's level twos and levels threes. The level two is by far the most popular. Um, require the least mild electricity to run. Going from zero uh charge to a topped off charge is about four hours. Um, depending on, you know, kind of the range battery you have in your car. So um, it's about eighty miles per hour of charge. So for example, um, our general manager Titan Solutions, which is one of the arms of Titan. Uh, she drives a a Mini Cooper EV. And it has eighty miles of range, so she would take about an hour on a level two to charge up. The the new Ford one fifty pickup trucks, I think they have about a three hundred mile range. Um, and and that, so that would take you closer to the three and a half or four hours to charge on a level two charger. Level threes are the fast charger, um, very expensive. Um, we are doing a number of those as well. I will say the incentive dollars for those is already gone. Uh, until they fill up the bucket again on those, meaning they the utility, but a level three charger will charge um from zero to empty in about thirty-five minutes. So, you know, really. I'm sorry.
Well, has there been any research on how many people in Columbia have um electric cars and they've utilized this?
We we haven't done any research on Columbia specifically, we've done a lot of research, uh, which, um, again, I'm not the subject matter expert for the company, actually, there there's a couple other people, but. Um, in terms of numbers, number of, number of cars across the country and also in certain parts of Connecticut. Um, that were sold our electric uh EVs uh in twenty twenty-one, and then what's happened now in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two and beyond. But um, to answer your question, Judy, the 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 numbers are drastically growing in terms of EV car sales. But I don't have any Columbia data and, and um, you know, just a reminder, people traveling through, I I I happen to know the center of town. Is about, I think, about twenty thousand cars a day, you know, go all all different directions, so there's a lot of people traveling. Through various parts of Columbia that would, you know, they're not Columbia residents, but. Um, I I what I couldn't do, Judy, I I'd be glad to send you, um, I'll I'll send it through to Mark, and then maybe he can disperse it to everybody. We have a a very good presentation on the EV. Uh, market in general, um, both in Connecticut and nationwide that you might find interesting. Um, but but the numbers are growing, you know, places like California, of course, you know, at at times certain, you know, you won't be able to buy a a gas powered car there, and a lot of that.
At some point down, at some point down the road, I'm assuming they're gonna be all electric cars. I'm just not sure how.
Right, didn't they just turn off electricity in California because it overpowered the grid?
Well, they will. Oh, well, that 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 wasn't, that wasn't based on that, that was based on the um, the um. Yeah, air conditioner.
So I I only have one other question, well, it's cause I'll forget it, I'm sorry, why wouldn't we like do businesses a favor and put two charging stations. At different businesses so people can go in and enjoy shopping or something? I mean, we've, it, okay, I I know I'm kind of stretching a little bit, but if we had a restaurant down at the Plaza down there, why wouldn't you have one there? So that you can spend an hour and a half eating a nice meal and charge their phone, I mean, I don't, I don't know if I want them hanging out at the. Different places.
Well, part of my issue is, are we not competing with future business? So are businesses starting to put these in gas stations, that kind of thing, aren't they starting to put it in? And wouldn't we be directly competing with the people that pay taxes to us?
Um, you know, private businesses are certainly, um, you know, putting these in for for sure, at least, if there's no doubt about it.
Are they, are the funds available for private, private businesses to?
It's a, is it, it's it's exactly the same incentives, exactly the same incentives, right now, including the Volkswagen money, um, that everybody be. So, uh, so, yeah, the the utility, the the. The the utility. The the utility incentives are are certainly available to private businesses and they're same exact incentives and and the way we present our proposals to them is exactly the same as we do to. The the many, many towns we service. Steve, if if private businesses, maybe, you know. Like, again, you're talking about the plaza, that plaza owner simply needs to call us, we'll we'll, we we be there next week for a site visit. Fill out the applications and 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 they can segregate the money, the incentive dollars as well, that. The main thing that we try to tell everybody is, if you think you may want some in the next twelve months, then allocate the funds now because the funds are going. Uh, you know, there's, there's no obligation, you know, so it just, it just gets an incentive dollar earmarked to the town or to a private business or or wherever.
Okay, yes, Chris, I'm sorry, it's definitely, no problem. Uh, my question may be more, Mark, so. I presume that the uh school districts reached out to M and J and C three, they're willing to interest in investing in electric buses that were down road, cause we have.
The school district is, Maria is directly talking with the bus company. And they're trying to swap out an older bus and bring in electric bus on. There's also money for electric buses, so the school's gonna focus on trying to get one electric bus.
The only reason I I would like, if we're, if the town is itself going to buy electric vehicles. Then, yeah, I I I see putting, you know, senior center bus turns into electric, maybe one of the senior center and and a few other places. Um, that would make sense to me. Works department, if if that goes to an electric, and and even the fire department, you know, if fire department is gonna move to an electric.
So we do for some employees. They get a town vehicle because of emergency or the position and stuff, we could put one. In those locations where they park, so, yeah, okay, we're, we're gonna, um. I don't know, we'll move forward, right? I'd say we can bring them in and and do the survey.
Good, um.
They completed.
They have done that, and their next step will be to sign up on the, on the proposal. On the proposal that Chris thinks he can get to us by next week.
I I I know, Mark, just so you know, Mark, where that process is, um, all the proposals for Columbia were written today. Uh, they're on our CFO's desk for approval. Um, and so that's why I'm I'm very confident we can get to those, and. And Lisa, you mentioned the fire department, just out of the curious honesty pieces. Um, we 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 did bring that up at one point, I think, and and the conversation really related to, do we really want people swinging by there if they see an EV? Charging station and stopping and getting in the way of. You know, the activity that the fire department would be needing to do, so we didn't want, we didn't want to bundle that up, that's all.
I'm thinking more for. So what if everything gets blown up and, you know, we have a hurricane and we're out of power for eight days? But there's a like, there's fire department guys at a generator that can charge up cars and people have, and there's no gas available. You know, remember, those were issues, so. I I, it's an emergency place.
I wonder what other towns are doing, I I I have a feeling in some point in the future, we're gonna be doing this, so I'm just wondering the process.
Congress had EV charging in town hall for. Four years, about four years. Their town manager's car is like. And it's the station is right in front of this.
And and I'm not as concerned with making money on it. Or letting the public come in as servicing of the whole vehicle.
I'm not, I'm not talking about making money. But.
We're opening it to the public.
Well, we're not making money, we should break even.
All right.
Uh, the last thing I'll say, I don't mean to interrupt, Steve, I apologize, but um. If there is interest in in having us come back and take a look at the fire department, some. Some portion of the fire department, we'd be glad to do that, we could, we could funnel all that and still have the 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 um. Proposals to you for next week, and again, I I know I sound like a broken record, but you're not committing to a thing, you're just. Saving the incentive dollars for the applications that you might want to. And then somewhere down the pike over the next twelve months, you say, you know, we're not gonna do that one, but we are gonna do these kind of things, so. Just just the thought process.
I have a quick question, can you put an electric charger at the fire station but not have it show on the search web?
Yeah, so, that's a good question, you know, people have an an app on their phone that will, you know, when they need to be charged, it'll show up and it'll light up and show all the different dots of where the. The filling stations are, if you don't want. Um, uh, one to show up, you you don't have to allow it to be showed up on the network. And we have, we have a lot of, we have a lot of nursing homes, for example, that are clients of ours, and. They're putting the EV chargers in, but they don't want people stopping by at ten o'clock at night to. The 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 charger cars at that kind of place, so that's completely. Completely, completely up to, completely up to the client, completely up to the client.
So, I don't see any motion here, well, do you want a motion to. Authorize me to go forward and keep moving forward on this. Application.
I see Bill. Yes, sir, you getting ready to vote again, Bill?
No, I I suggest that we table it to to the next meeting. We we can take a look at the proposal, Steve, and then and then address it at the next meeting.
Okay, Chris, you're gonna have those through us next week, you think?
Can I come to the next meeting?
No, no, you're gonna have those proposals to us the next week, by next week?
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll we'll definitely do that, and it is, finally, we, it can be tabled, it does bill, you know, that's what the vote is, the only thing I would. Again, caution everybody, for example, the level three incentive dollars are already gone. And they won't come back again till twenty twenty four, so. Uh, you don't, you don't want the incentive dollars for the level twos to do the same thing, but but again, sure, we we can, I can certainly have the proposals to you next week, Steve, no problem.
I have one more question. Can you, can you use the chargers from generator power?
Sure, there there there'll be no issue with that, Lisa, for sure, they they require electricity and the generators are doing that, yes.
Bill, what about moving forward so we can get those proposals if we have no obligation until?
That's fine, Steve, I'm good with that. That's fine.
I like, you know, I, I understand, and it's a great job telling me how we might lose money there, Chris, thank you so much, but. I'm in sales too, but I I I I see the validity in this, I don't have an electric, well, I do, I have a hybrid type of vehicle, but. Um, if we can always change our mind or decide not to go with one or want to add a different one, I think we need to move forward.
I think the applications are due September thirtieth in our next four second meetings, I feel.
Okay, uh, I'm going next week, so, um, just let you know, so, all the, so I make a motion that we move forward. And um, looking at the proposals, that's it.
Yeah, Mark, would you give some information, like some comments, just about the process, how many people would stop by? From the public, how long would they be there? You know, they're not gonna wait till their car totally dies, but they may, just I'm curious how it's, how the process has been in other locations. So as we kind of make decisions.
Hold on, in favor? Hi, thank you. Chris, thank you very much, we're looking forward to looking at what you have for us and uh. Um, stay in touch, right?
Absolutely, thanks for the time, everybody, appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Bye bye.
Yeah. In saying that, I do, I I I'm gonna reach out to a couple of business owners, because honestly, if people are there and they're doing. You know. Here, top of there, right, a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, let's see, I go up to town hall and take four, you know, taking an hour to get a month or whatever month. Or I can go down to the gas station and ten minutes get it off to where I can get home.
Well, the other thing is, my guess is for local businesses like gas stations, they don't have the level twos. They have the level threes, you get, you're out there in thirty minutes.
And they're gonna pay, and they're gonna make a profit, and they're gonna pay that.
Okay. Uh, new business recommendation from the Public Works Director, well, EverSource. And so you know what, we did take down your tree and passport, took it down, and the bottom line is, uh, we're asking for some compensation. And in Beth wanting all the time she's been with the Department of Public Works here and other places. She's come up with a recommendation on what we should ask EverSource for compensation. So, Mark, what is it?
And that's on the line, if everybody has any questions, but um. Um, she's, the EverSource is willing to try to help. Correct the problem, uh, their remedy that Beth has come up with is to stump line all the stumps on the town green. We have some old stumps that we'd like to get rid of, including this giant stump they just created. Remove the stump grinding debris and replace with topsoil, seed all disturbed areas. And also provide one full week of a three person Asplin tree crew to help remove hazardous trees around town. At no cost.
At no cost. Can we ask if they plant some trees there?
Well, that's the problem.
And see, we. We received a grant for beautification and. So we have funding.
But we don't know what we want to plant, we have to decide what type of tree would survive the next hundred years and not get a blade or. And my other concern is establishing the value of the tree. Now, you you have some artifacts, knowledge, chemistry.
Uh, Ingrid told me that that tree was uh. That General Rochambeau camped under that tree and they passed it through Columbia. And in the backside of it, he missed his wife so much, he carved a heart with their initial. And in twenty paces, threw it knife and struck that heart three times. So that tree is now gone, what is that tree value?
I don't think that was a Norway maple.
They've bought it, never.
But I could also see a promise on a place of tree, forty years from now, we'll be only one, and everyone retired and.
So I I I don't, I don't know. Right, I don't know the value of the tree, this is. You know.
I like the stump running.
No, look, I like, I think these are great suggestions, I just wanted a tree. But so, we're gonna get the tree for the.
She wants, she wants all three of these, including when the tree dies.
Yeah.
That is a lot.
They all cut down a tree without asking, it's on the middle of our green, we have a thing, yeah.
First, just gonna say, I mean, these sound like. Remedies, but I mean, water, water process itself.
Do you wanna ask that?
Um, yeah, I I don't know where you're getting that.
Well, I'm saying as far as as far as. To prevent this from happening again, to make sure that. Um, that Beth is notified and she's in the. So there's no.
Well, they didn't notify anybody.
Well, right, it sounded like that between EverSource and in the tree service room, there's some miscommunication, so. That, to me, that would be a big remedy as far as how they learn.
Beth, can you kind of weigh in on uh? How they're talking about not having that happen again, or?
Sure, basically what happened is they're doing trimming on Route eighty seven, so. They reached out to the. State Tree Warden, where it's a state road. And he gave a blanket permission. Um, but basically what they're supposed to do on top of that blanket permission from the tree warden is. Approach every property owner and have signed permission. And that's their protocol. So. Something fell through the cracks, they said that the foreman on the job was changed three different times. Um, and they completely. Take ownership of. That mistake because. Every tree that is removed should have signed permission, and it doesn't, so. Other than their assurance that this will never happen again. They broke protocol and it shouldn't have happened.
Okay, um. Ju- just for a, you ever have something like this happen again, where we're gonna get these three things? Or happened before, that we're gonna get these three items that we're looking for for compensation?
I basically um have been dealing with the arborist for EverSource and also the foreman for the Asplin Crew. And they're very apologetic and they. Said, let us know what we can do to to make this right, so I just gave out some suggestions. So that you'd have a talking point. And decide, you know, nothing has been formalized. But I think it's something that we should at least approach EverSource, and if they say it's. Too much, we could scale back, but I don't think it's. Unreasonable for a tree that. Is probably seventy years old and isn't a complete line. So it's not like it's a standalone tree, this is in a. You know, there's probably, what, six maples in a row there, and now there's one missing.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, you know what, I'm 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 good with her recommendations and.
So you haven't, Chris, have you talked to EverSource to see if they'll go through with this?
No, she's she's waiting for her, I would say, doing.
They basically offered the tree crew. But I feel this, the stump itself is. More of an eyesore. That that's what we should address.
If they are the tree crew, then I'm I'm with all.
Yes, that's kind of bothering me.
Yeah, that's, that's, they're treating me probably.
No, you didn't know, all right. Uh, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the recommendation set forth from the Public Works Director regarding compensation from EverSource. And put in motion negotiations. For those, for that compensation. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, hi.
Hi.
Beth, thanks for uh taking a night out while you're on vacation.
Hey, Beth, do you have any, uh, are there any electric, um, douche and a half or dump trucks coming yet? I I'm I'm being serious, since I have you on the phone, um.
I I know that Kat is working on some equipment. That is electric. I don't, I haven't heard of a large six wheel dump truck at this point.
Okay, that's a lot of battery power, so, yeah, all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Move along, it's nice to think now, like, you know.
The donation to the senior center of the senior center, so we have an old commercial stove. That uh, it's not worth fixing, we tried to.
Well, we replaced it because of the power.
Yeah, so we got a new one, we replaced that with a budget last year, and we'd like to donate to the Eastern Connecticut Veterans Community Center, Willamette. Willamette Cruzaneda, so. I approve, uh, I would like to. Make a motion that we. Donate to the Eastern Connecticut Veterans Community Center, the senior center. Uh, commercial stove that has been replaced at Becker Senior Center. Any problems there? All those in favor?
The lions said don't, they came to me.
Even better.
The lions. Yeah, Bob, um.
They take landscaping trailer roll.
Uh, the Becker facility rental, um, what is this?
Uh, this just came to light. That we had a mistake on the rental form, because the rental form is actually. At the bottom, it shows when it was approved or amended, we want to add another amendment that. The chairs, it's not just no more than a hundred and thirty can have had, it's. No more than a hundred and tables and chairs, you can have a hundred and thirty, chairs only, you can have two hundred and fifty five. That's the biomaterial sign that's on the building, so we're missing one section. Chairs only.
I move to approve the update presented to the Becker Senior Center Facility Rental Form, all those in favor? Nothing with the Columbia Lake, the beach, good appointment. Steve Harrington has resigned from the alternate in inland weapons and and water forces commission. Correction, in the first place, because he is. He has. Property that is in the weapons and stuff, and. Uh, I make a motion to approve the resignation of Stephen Harrington as an alternate in the inland weapons and water courses commission. All those in favor? And I think to. Well, we found a new person to take over for Jill. Her name is Kara Bowen, uh, there's a couple of extensive interviews and stuff, so. I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Kara Bowen for the accounting assistant position. Any questions?
Looks like she has a great resume.
And Beth liked her, Mark. That's fine, everything, all those in favor? Your town administrator is important.
Um, something just with the office today is good news. Um, Congressman Courtney. Actually, just notified us, uh, Stephen was talking to me about it too, that. We just received a hundred and thirty six thousand in federal funding awarded to Columbia Law and Fire Department. Um, to help us. Uh, fund the breathing. And we. It was true third, we we asked for two hundred and twenty three thousand, um. And the grant came through a hundred and thirty six, so. It's a big part of it, we can get going right away, I'm replacing the bottles. And then we'll.
That's the one we just lost, right?
No, we um, we originally lost what we asked for.
So, I.
No, a grant prior to this grant request.
So didn't we ask for a grant for the self containing breathing FRS, like?
Yes, we did, we asked for it through um, Kathy Austin's office, and we didn't get it, that's what we did that through Porters.
But, yeah, this is.
Yeah, please, um, I'm sure, yeah, so the the request amount was two twenty four, five twenty, seventy four, three, that we got the one thirty six. Zero one nine, um, the town is. Require ten percent. To come up with of that one thirty six, um. So great, something, not all of it, but it's it's a start. We still also have, and that's for the AFG for this year, uh, since it's a fire related grant. We still also have the forestry truck replacement. Grant that is still alive, has been rejected or anything, um, that is for two hundred and sixty thousand that were released here, which. Um, just to give an overview on AFG, they 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 do this a lot, they don't give the full amount so that they can. Get more towns or municipalities that kind of say that they they need a little more. But they will give a a portion or something like that, so. Um, keep our fingers crossed, they're supposed to be releasing another back tomorrow or Thursday, I believe. Um, so, we'll just keep waiting here again, we haven't been denied, that's always a good thing. And um, also on the. That same grant fund, we received five thousand dollars from the the that we applied to a annual grant. So far, over a hundred and forty one thousand dollars. And we'll save the grant.
Save, so, um. Congressman Courtney's office asked for those folks to have a, whether they've published something or? Very good. All right, next, we done with your
Just, I want to afford to realize that that's really, in case you want to be suicide, it's Suicide Awareness Month, and A H M, Youth and Family Services wants me to know that they are welcoming residents uh staff, faculty, board members to become certified QPR gatekeepers. And that is QPR stands for Question, Persuade, and Prefer. And their mission is reduce suicidal behavior and save lives. But in your packets, there's a whole brochure of the three different training times and dates that are available on place. Uh that is something we would like to participate in. Participants will receive a QPR booklet directed at I'm not sure. Yeah, it's a virtual online training. There's one other thing that you should bring the board up to speed on, just happened as well. Um there's a mole in the lower head of the quarter school. Uh they closed down six classrooms. And they've had it legalized by Mystic air handling. Uh they're looking at it, seems to be normal, basic mold and humidity. Uh but they've moved the kids and we're going to also be working on tightening uh to engineer. The problem is putting HVAC humidify that section of that wing. Requires an upgrade to the electric panel. Without a rope, that actually is maxed. So that's they haven't done it.
They talked about it.
Well, maybe it's maxed now. Um I'm here, Mike, you have to do with addition. So that has to be engineered and um we've got to get proposals, but there is uh right now. And I'll bring it to you in the next meeting. I'll get the motion written uh through our town attorney. But there's a school construction grant for this exact HVAC indoor air quality program of the state that we can apply with. Um so we'll have to start that process quick. But I I just wanted to give you a heads up. That's all I have to say.
Okay, uh there is some correspondence in there. Take a look at it. Always Budget, no transfers, but you have refund. Quite a lot when it comes to paying So I make a motion, we refund tax payers in the amount of thirty, three thousand five hundred ninety five dollars thirty three cents. As per the list. Any discussion? All those in favor? Paying the payment of bills. Make a motion, we pay bills in the amount of a hundred thirteen dollars, eight hundred and eleven, excuse me, a hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and forty three cents. Consisting of emergency twenty two, twenty three, regular credit card and bank checks.
Were those all of those?
Nineteen thousand. Uh that's what was billed right now, so we're because of total of like nineteen thousand.
So that was in the budget.
That was in capital, I remember for three years.
What's the annual quality fee?
What is it?
Annual equality.
Equality valuation services. Oh, that's uh for our session.
The porter trap has that part of that one also?
Yes, it was. The porter tracked the concrete path for the distance. For the water sampling, seven grand.
I saw that. Is that for the?
Seventy five hundred dollars.
It's all of public buildings. We have our How often do they come out and check the water?
That's the TRC, that's for the lake.
Okay, that, that bill of TRC is the analysis of the lake, the it's it's under contract. They're analyzing inflow of water, checking oxygen level phosphorus.
Wait, what's uh, what was that budget of this year, like fifteen thousand?
Twenty two thousand total, and of that I think eighteen thousand was for.
So is this for the whole summer? Is that?
Yeah, the most really happens in
When everybody's in the lot.
I would tell you that every time I got the reports we were like crystal clear. Any more, any discussion on the margin? All those in favor, pay the bills.
Be sure that those bills are reviewed by L. Matt.
Audience, citizen, anybody? Oh, yeah, I know you had your hand up on something. I mean, I want to make sure I'm respectful and follow during the time that I can.
I was actually gonna say that I'm happy to join that new committee that you guys weren't bringing together, keep that the international person, I see you already have one, but
Well, I, he's usually selfish and wants to do it all himself, but I'm pretty big to help manage that. So uh, you know, we can take a thing down and contact, and I'm sure there'll be a rush, it might never work. Great, thanks. I, and again, okay, board, board member comments.
So I I've got, actually, I've got two. I wanted to, yeah, which Joe was still here, but I wanted to thank her chief of accommodated, who said in the morning earlier giving me the tour of Hop River, so And uh just more question, remember a few meetings back when uh when you had that um the pyrology and you had the urgency center and you actually made, you could have like a drill or two term Yep, is there any more thought about doing that?
Well, they they scheduled for a period that I was going to be away. So um so Yeah, we had a reschedule. There was talk about doing just kind of a walk, not a walkthrough, but just a paper type of scenario. When it came down to do a full walkthrough scenario, we were trying to reschedule.
So right now it's back to, it's more meeting hub and what Jennifer and I and the fire department emergency management director can see during a crisis and how can it interpret the situation. So that's the next meeting. Uh an actual simulation is not
But it would include the other board members, so worst case, he operated for
Yep, a long period of time.
Right, it's not just
You always have something to say. Please say something wrong. Okay.
All set.
Excellent. Very note weather, so I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at uh twenty twenty. All those in favor?